Now call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight and also those will be viewing the meeting on G10 television. We'll begin tonight with by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Proton Mike Lazzaro, followed by the invocation by our city attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this most beautiful day, and to give you thanks for all the blessings you so graciously bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us individually. As our nation continues to battle COVID-19, for many of us, it has become unfortunately personal, personally that we know folks who have become affected by the virus, and for some of us, we know folks who have died, and we know folks who have is left debilitated. We pray for healing. We pray for those who have been economically distressed because of this pandemic, and we pray as we enter the fall and winter months that all of us can work and do the best we can to protect ourselves and others. We also this evening give thanks for the life and the legacy of the Reverend Dr. James Brown, a community leader, a visionary, and his passing, we all mourn, but we especially remember his wife and family and his congregation during this time. As always, we pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world, and for our mayor and for our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
So you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Move for adoption.
Second. All those in favor signify with CNI. All opposed. Next, we have our first section of public comments scheduled for the evening. I have one person has signed up, Mr. Humphrey. You can come over here to the podium, please. If you will, just state your name and address for the clerk over here.
My name is Monte Humphrey. I live at 1125 Clayton Hupford Road, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I was in a while back talking about the ETJ. I've tried to be removed from it on Wolf Swamp Road and Clayton Hupford Road, Highway 17. We own, my wife and I own approximately three quarters of a mile of road front there and along the three roads. We live on a family farm, spending our family since early 1800s along in there, late 1700s. But anyway, we just want a place to build, and our children are wanting to build there, and the ETJ has given us a little bit of a problem with the sidewalk situation, and I just would like for you to consider reconsider removing our property out of the ETJ, if you would. Thank you.
Quick question. Was the sidewalk issue?
Mayor and members of council, this evening on your agenda, there is an amendment that you will be considering. I believe that it is item number 13 from Community Standards where the sidewalk requirement of the ETJ will be removed. So if you approve that this evening, then that requirement on any property outside of the city limits, properties that would be in the ETJ, would be eliminated.
One quick question for you, Mr. Humphrey. Your land is close to where WR Willis's property is, right? And that was just?
As the crow flies, probably quarter of a mile.
And that was recently taken out of the ETJ.
The sidewalk issue that Mr. Woodruff had talked about was if we couldn't get totally removed from the ETJ, we would like to remove the sidewalk issue because the sidewalk dead ends at a ditch on both ends, and it's going to be a safety issue. But overall, we'd just like to get totally removed because we have our, our business is located on the farm, and we have to be inspected by the city fire marshal every year, and he gives us requirements to meet if they were to have to come out there to fight a fire, but they can't come out there to fight a fire. So it's kind of, and then we have to buy the yearly permit.
One correction. I know we normally don't communicate in public, so may I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. We do go out to fight a fire if it's a mutual aid request. Now, normally in that location, Pumpkin Center is right out there, and they're very good about responding, but just to clarify for the record, if Pumpkin Center needed assistance, the city would send a truck.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We have adoption of minutes from the September 15, 2020 special meeting, the September 22, 2020 regular meeting, and also the consent items, 1 through 11.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any discussion here? Not all in favor, signify with CNI.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is number 12 here. This is a public hearing with map amendment for rezoning from residential single-family seven to conditional corridor commercial at 150 Civil Street.
Mayor, members of city council. Again, agenda item 12 is a rezoning request submitted by the Church of Jacksonville for 150 Civil Street. You'll notice on the city map before you is location in the city of Jacksonville. This is just south of the intersection of Civil Street and Highway 17, near the McDonald's, the Taco Bell, Long John Silver's. This is aerial photography of the site. You'll notice that is currently used by the Church of Jacksonville for a church. Existing zoning in the area to the west and to the north are all, is all corridor commercial. Properties are crossed Civil Street and to the south are zone residential multifamily low density. The current CAMO future land use designation of this property is institution, so therefore their request to be rezoned to corridor commercial is supported by the CAMO. Several months ago, the church came in to speak with staff about possibly developing, doing some project in the future, and that's when we identified that the property was currently zoned residential multifamily low density. In that zoning district, churches require a special use, so we recommended one or two routes, the special use permit application, or a more simple rezoning. And looking again at the evidence presented tonight, the rezoning is supported. This is what the project would look like if rezoned to corridor commercial. The planning board heard this at their September meeting, and they, along with staff, are recommending approval of findings fact A through J, or yes, A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by correcting a non-conforming use and creating more development opportunities. Members of Park and Associates, the representative, the advocate, and staff would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? Jeremy. Required to have a public hearing in this matter, so this time I'll recess the regular council meeting, open up a public hearing. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this issue? Here are no one, I'm close to public hearing. Counsel, you being asked to approve the request.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning request based on findings of facts A through G being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating conforming use and creating more development opportunities.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, signify with CNI.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, this is Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, and this is for for text amendment, amendment to Article 5 Development Standards, and this deals with bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Ryan's going to offer this. Ryan.
Good morning, Mayor, council. This is item number 13 before you is a proposed Unified Development Ordinance text amendment. And just to kind of give council and the viewing public just kind of an overview, anytime we discover an issue that we believe is worthy of consideration for an amendment, we evaluate the ordinance and the impacts that it would have, and then we would propose, decide to propose an amendment, we draft the amendment, and then we take it to planning board as we have done with this item, and then we bring it before city council for a public hearing and a decision, which is why we're here tonight. The biggest issue is that, you know, for, for many years, the city of Jacksonville has required sidewalk installation with developments within the city limits and the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction. This proposal would eliminate the requirement for the bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the ETJ, and the primary reason is that the city is unable to maintain the infrastructure using the tax funds for those areas outside the corporate limits. And we have concerns with the long-term safety and the liability concerns with that, and as such, staff discussed this and decided it was worthy of bringing forward. We took this before the planning board last week, and the planning board recommended approval of the proposed Unified Development Ordinance. And following the statutory requirements, you'll notice the recommendation is that the amendment is not consistent with the Jacksonville Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan, which identifies the need and demand for a more accessible, safe, and functional system throughout the Jacksonville urban area. However, the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest as the city cannot maintain these facilities. And that's, the general statute states that as long as you identify whether it is or isn't in compliance with plans, and that it does or does not advance the public interest, that council can make a decision whether it's in support, if, if the plan's supported or not. So you are able to make this change if you so choose, and that's what staff and planning board is recommending. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions, Ryan? Thank you. We're required to hold a public hearing on this matter, so this time I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up a public hearing on this matter. Anybody present that wishes to speak? Here are no one, close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you being asked to approve the text amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that we approve the UDO text amendment found in attachment A. This amendment is not consistent with the Jacksonville Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, Transportation Plan, which has identified the need and demand for more accessible, safe, and functional system throughout the Jacksonville urban area. The amendment is reasonable and in the public's interest as the city cannot maintain, currently maintain the bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the urban area and outside the corporate limits.
Second. No motion in the second. Discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, signify with CNI.
Aye.
All opposed? It's a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, amendment Article 2.2, common review procedures, and also 5.6, transportation impact analysis. Ryan King's going to be offering this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, another UDO amendment. Basically, the biggest issue as it relates to the transportation impact analysis is the application completeness standards, and Article 2 of the UDO requires the TIA to be completed prior to performing development review. That's really not the way that we've done things. We try to basically start the review process while the TIA goes on concurrently, so we just want to codify this. So basically, just making some changes to where it's no longer required to be submitted prior to the development review, recommended that they do it that way, but not required in case a developer wants to run those processes concurrently. The second part of the ordinance amendment is to, to remove, as recommended by our UDO consultant back in, when it was being drafted, is remove the application content requirements to our Unified Development Ordinance Administrative Manual. We've actually already done that part because we can move stuff in and out of there as it's not a code, but this would actually remove that from the UDO itself. So two minor adjustments. We, staff and planning board both recommend approval of this. We believe that this will create development opportunity, or better development opportunities for the development community, and unlike the previous item, we believe that this item is consistent with the plans as the TIA thresholds are not changing, and that the amendment advances the public interest. We will be happy to answer any questions that city council may have at this time.
Any questions, Ryan, on this matter? Thank you. With that, we'll recess the regular council meeting and open up the required public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this matter present? Seeing no one, I'll close the regular, the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and you're being asked, counsel, to approve this UDO amendment.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the UDO text amendment found in attachment A. The amendment is consistent with the adopted plan as TIA requirements and thresholds are not changing. The amendment advances the public interest by providing flexibility within the development application process.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with CNI.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us to item number 15 on the agenda, and this is a special use permit in type 3 site plan, Bailey Mini Storage on, at 175 Freedom Way. So this time I'll recess the regular meeting, open up a public hearing. It's quasi judicial matter, so you solemnly swear the evidence you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-gotten.
I do.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Agenda item 15 is a special use permit in type 3 site plan submitted by Bailey and Associates. Most of you may know this location as the old Kmart at Pine and Green Shopping Center. They are proposing to use that 98, approximately 98,000 square foot facility as a self-service storage facility, climate-controlled indoor. You'll notice the vicinity map before you on the screen, aerial photography of Pine and Green Shopping Center in the subject parcel. Currently, the property is zone corridor commercial, and within this district, self-storage requires a special use permit. The all surrounding properties are zone corridor commercial. They are not proposing any major renovations inside the building that would trigger additional compliance. However, they are going to be creating a modified drive aisle in front of the facility for drop off and pickup of your items that you're looking to store. Last week, the planning board reviewed this project, and they, along with staff, are recommending approval of the special use permit in type 3 site plan. Representatives from Bailey and Associates, as well as Park and Associates, their design professionals, are here and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And let me correct my recommendation. The planning board and city staff are recommending approval based on findings of fact, A through G being found in the affirmative, and that the approval creates a value service for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions, Jeremy? Jeremy?
Jeremy. What zoning allows?
Industrial, as of with the UDO adoption in 2014, the old B1 zoning allowed self-storage outright. However, with the UDO, I believe the UDO committee saw fit that it required as a special use. There are special standards for self-storage. They really won't apply since this is a redevelopment site, but industrial allows it outright.
The zone B1 now.
It's zone corridor commercial, the old B1.
The old B1, but, and it's allowed under that?
It's allowed in, it used to be allowed in B1, but when the UDO adopted, it got changed to a special use permit in the CC district.
No matter where?
Correct.
No matter where they go?
That's right. Unless it's industrial zone, it's allowed outright.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this matter present? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing in this matter. Counsel, you're being asked to approve this request here.
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that we move to approve the special use permit in type 3 site plan based on findings of fact, A through G being found in the affirmative, and the approval creates a value service to the community.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, signify with CNI.
Aye.
Takes us to number 16 on our agenda for this evening, and let me get to it here. This is a city code amendment for abandoned and derelict vehicles in the New River, in the New River area, and.
We have two young people who are with us this evening who have been working on this out of the Stormwater Division. I'd like for them to introduce themselves. John and I, especially John, have worked very closely with them as they have prepared this information. What we'd like to do is give you a PowerPoint that will introduce the topic, and if you're comfortable with the topic, then we have an ordinance that you could adopt this evening. If, however, after the PowerPoint, you have additional questions, we could certainly delay the, the adoption until a future point. Mr. Carter, any introduction, comments?
Every day, I have the opportunity to work with some of the best and brightest, that's our employees, and Aaron and Matty are two of the newest ones on board. They, through their work in Pat Donovan Brandonberg's department, identified a problem, abandoned and derelict vessels in the New River. Some of you, Mr. Warden the other day, mentioned that before he even knew we were working on this. Through their efforts and through their seeking out state law, going to conferences, reaching out to Manio and to Beaufort, they have put together what I believe is not only an ordinance that will take care of the half dozen or so abandoned and derelict vessels that are out there today, but will be a roadmap ordinance for the future in keeping our river and waterways clean. I'll now turn it over to Matty and Aaron. They can introduce themselves and do their PowerPoint for you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Maddie McCann, and I'm a water quality tech with the Stormwater Division.
I'm Aaron Herndon, also a water quality tech with the city. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time. So we'll just get right into it. Tonight, we're proposing an amendment to Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances to address abandoned and derelict vessels. And to give you a brief overview, we have about 15 vessels in our city limits right now that we believe meet the criteria as an abandoned or derelict vessel. And these vessels present a multitude of issues for the city of Jacksonville, one being that they're a navigational hazard, especially in the narrow and shallow waterway of the New River that flows through downtown Jacksonville. They are an overall aesthetic problem for downtown Jacksonville while also threatening the valuable residential and city-owned property located in the area. Additionally, an area of concern for our department is that they are often grounded ashore on shoreline areas or resting on the bottom, threatening our sensitive aquatic habitat in the New River. And lastly, and most importantly, this is an issue we've seen persist and worsen with every storm event, adding to additional vessels in our waterway or damaging the vessels we currently have right now. This is not a problem unknown by other municipalities throughout coastal Carolina, and the fact that abandoned and derelict vessels have plagued NC coast for some time has led to some local and state legislation regarding abandoned and derelict vessels. In 2019, the North Carolina General Assembly passed House Bill 429, empowering municipalities to enact and enforce ordinances addressing these vessels in their waterways. And the proposed amendment brought to you tonight was drafted using those general statutes and local statutes. To give you a visual, the map seen above are the 15 vessels located through the downtown Jacksonville area that we believe meet the criteria of abandoned and derelict vessels. And the important point I'd like to point out here is that all of these vessels fall within the city limits, as we determined past the Lewis Hill Junior Bridge. And to give you the necessary background this evening, the amendment before you defines an abandoned vessel as a vessel that has been relinquished, left, or given up by the lawful owner without the intention to later resume any right or interest in the vessel. And a derelict vessel is a vessel that, while moored in the jurisdictional waters of the city of Jacksonville or grounded on public or private land, is in one or eight of the following conditions. One, the vessel has an improper, non-working, or no anchor light, which is a hazard to navigation. Number two, the vessel is neglected, substantially dismantled, or improperly maintained, or is not able to be used for navigation as intended. Number three, the vessel is not compliant with current registration requirements. Four, vessel interior is exposed to the elements, rain, waves, et cetera. Five, the vessel is listing. Six, vessel is aground. Seven, vessel is in danger of breaking its mooring. Or eight, the vessel is sinking or taking on water. And with that being said, I'd like to hand it over to Aaron, who's going to give you a brief overview of the vessels so that you may understand the importance of enacting this ordinance.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much for hearing us tonight. Our first vessel is hundred proof. Initially, this vessel started, when I, when I first started here, this vessel was located along Shoreline Drive tied to some pilings. During Hurricane Florence, it actually broke its mooring and was later found drifting, dragging anchor back and forth in Wilson Bay. It was there for three to four months before it was finally secured a little better. It is now currently located at the Marina Cafe, but as you can see, the interior is exposed to the elements. There is no working anchor light, and it has been neglected or partially dismantled. City Golden, this is the large shrimp trawler located just north of Goat Island. When I ask people, just trying to gather some information about it, how long's it been there, what's the issue with it, the one thing I hear over and over again is, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been at least five years. It's almost been sort of a landmark on the water. A major problem you'll see there is during the last hurricane event, its stern and starboard anchor broke free, causing it to turn and be pushed aground. A major concern here is the next storm event. We have both the bridges south and to the north, also other vessels, private property docks, stuff like that. It's an excellent candidate to break free. Vessel three, the old sailboat. This vessel showed up in mid-August. It was tied to the property north of the Marina Cafe. I do not know if it actually broke its mooring, its anchor, but it is now currently tied to the island, just a, a downed tree on the island right north of the 17 bridge. We also don't know if it's being occupied at this time or not. Live aboard number one, this vessel started at the Marina Cafe. It is now located, it's actually aground north of the Highway 17 bridge on the other side of the island. Its occupant is not the last registered owner. It was last registered in 2012. As you can see, the occupant has actually taken, taken lumber from a nearby city dock and used it to build a bulkhead slash dock of his own. Live aboard number two, this is very similar to live aboard number one, not the, the current occupant is not the last registered owner. You can see all the criteria it meets for making it derelict. A major issue here as well is just the amount of debris. You can see all the personal belongings, trash, that's not just on the boat, but littering the island next to it. Shoreline Drive, the vessel's long shoreline drive. As you can see, the vessel on the right, it's actually sitting on the bottom. The owner made a few attempts to pump it out and raise it so that they could take care of it. After they failed, it was just. After they failed, it was just left in its place and it's sat there since Hurricane Florence. The small sailboat and the pleasure craft in the adjoining picture, the small sailboat has a gash in its starboard side, and it's missing a window. It's making, making an excellent candidate to sink during the next major storm event. The pleasure craft is just being used as an example for multiple vessels in the area that meet the criteria for being abandoned or derelict. These sailboats are located just north of Laguna Bay. When I initially started here, a little over two years ago, there were two. It has now grown to six. They meet, again, multiple criteria for being derelict. We do not see them being tended to, maintained. They're just floating out there. Only two of them are actually attached to mooring balls. The rest just have a single anchor line dropped, and, well, the other two are docked. But they're all candidates to break free during the next storm event.
Thank you, Erin. Just to give you a brief few reasons why we think that this ordinance is very important. As city employees, we pride ourselves in promoting navigational safety on the New River, and these vessels threaten that. The three sailboats, or, excuse me, six sailboats now, are actually moored in the navigable channel outside of Laguna Bay, which make it difficult for recreation and commercial use of the New River. And we like to think that we've continued to promote recreational use of the New River with the new city marina and the Jacksonville Landing, and these vessels threaten that as well. And lastly, from a stormwater perspective, these vessels continue to threaten the city's efforts to rehabilitate the New River and the sensitive marine habitat that we fought to bring back to the city of Jacksonville. And the question everybody tends to ask are some funding sources and support for the city. We are currently in contact with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission and the North Carolina Coastal Federation. These entities are aware of these vessels. We've been working with them closely. And they have, they're working to determine if our vessels are qualified for removal through their three funding sources. They've let us know that both the City Golden and Hundred Proof are currently on their list of removal. And they are currently putting out bids for marine contractors to start the removal process for all of their vessels from Florence. So our hope is that, working with these entities, they will not only offset some removal costs for the city, but also help us through the process. We recently were told by the N C Coastal Federation that they would be willing to help us receive grant funding through NOAA Marine Debris. So they've been very helpful with this whole program. Do you want to go over this process, or would you like to go ahead?
Yes, John and I'll cover this. Just as with housing issues, there has to be a legal process. You can't just go out and say, the boat's in the wrong place, and so take it out of the water. So we have worked to create a process very similar to what you do with any code issue on land. It is identified in the actual ordinance. You can see the highlights, and that notification must be given. Action must go through a series of legal processes relative to the number of days a party has to respond and correct any of the violations. With that, Mr. Carter, any additional?
Just the fact that a boat owner who has an interest, and of course, after the, there's a ten-day notice, they have a right to appeal to the city manager and to have a hearing if they feel like that their boat does not meet the definition, or whatever, etc. Then, of course, there's even an appeal process set out in the ordinance to, they can appeal it to the Onslow County District Court. Again, we believe that we have this covered. And then I believe in my discussions with, that we can use some city resources as far as some of the smaller boats, removing them. But again, there's some larger ones there that would require some more resources than what the city has. And that's what I think they were talking in reference to as far as maybe getting some grant funding and so forth. But it, I think the picture has been painted as far as what is out there, and some of it's been there for quite a while.
Have all the owners been identified as far as these boats are concerned?
At this point, we have not actually started the process of identifying the owners. We do not have the legal authority to do that other than just encourage them. But once the ordinance is adopted, if you so choose to do so, then we will begin the formal process. One of the things that's difficult with some of the vessels, though, is that all of the control numbers have been taken off. All the registration numbers have been taken off. And therefore, it becomes very difficult to actually figure out who owns some of these vessels. In that case, the ordinance does require us to board the vessel, to placard the vessel notifying anyone that it must be corrected within a ten-day period. We will make every effort we can to research the records to determine who the owner is. But again, many of these vessels that are out there, while certainly the shrimp trawler has a name, you will find that most of the other vessels, they may have a name, but all of the control, registration, and so forth has been removed. The other thing is, relative to the process itself, we see this as a continuation of the Clean and Green Program. Now, the staff has said they would like to call this True and Blue, or Blue and True, whichever.
True and Blue.
True and Blue, meaning that we are true about protecting the water quality in the New River. But we do see this as a continuation, as you can take a lot of pride in. Y'all have now removed over, y'all is not the right word. The mayor and council's leadership has resulted in one hundred and thirty-four vacant and dilapidated houses being removed from the city. So this is just another step in cleaning up the appearance of the city. And again, you can see the vessels. And our recommendation would be that either this evening or when you're comfortable, that you consider adoption of the ordinance. But with that, what questions might you have?
These vehicles suitable for renovation as the mayor's yacht?
We actually believe, let me go back and, there's several in this area. We know that the mayor enjoys the water holes on the golf course, so several of these, we believe, would qualify.
So if these vessels weren't in the municipal arena, who would, whose responsibility or who would have the authority to do what we're trying to do?
Of entities, the Wildlife Resources Commission is currently compiling a list of all the abandoned and derelict vessels. So they, they work with local municipalities such as us to try to take care of this issue. But because of House Bill 429 recently being passed, actually, they're hoping that municipalities take it into their own action to build their own ordinance to help them because there's not enough manpower out there to tackle all of these vessels.
Well, I think too, what you mentioned earlier is that somewhat of a concern is, what do you think your budget's going to be, your future budget? I mean, I look at some of this, these items, and it's going to take considerable funds to handle this. I mean, it's not like we can use city staff to move that shrimp trawler. Or, I mean, of course, it could be like the time it took a boating course at Coastal Carolina, the instructor said he could fix anything with a can of gas and a pack of matches. But I mean, that's not what we're going to do.
Well, you certainly bring up an excellent point, and that's the funding part. You know, entering into this and putting it on your books gives us authority, but it doesn't give us a mandate. It's just like several of the homes that John and I've had to deal with with code enforcement over the last year. It's pretty easy to take down some of the houses that are in the city. And it'll be pretty easy to remove some of these vessels with very little cost. On the other hand, that shrimp trawler is a big one. And that's why the information that Matty shared regarding possible funding sources other than the city, we're going to have to do this one vessel at a time. And there will be some that we can say, yes, we can afford to do this. There are going to be others where we say, you know, it's just too expensive for us to take on. And we're going to try to get the grant money in order to accomplish it.
And lastly, I guess, do you think, once we enact the ordinance, it would motivate anybody that's the owners? Or are they, are they just still going to be abandoned?
Well, we think that it will from this standpoint. Where we can, just as your code enforcement ordinances have in there fines for every day of violation, this ordinance will establish fines for each day of violation after notice. So we believe that there will be incentives in the form of fines that will encourage some of these people to proceed to remove the vessel on their own. The real challenge is going to be where we cannot find the title holder to the vessel.
John, you want to address that further?
Well, I think it's also a situation, as Matty or someone said, these boats get in such disrepair, they go aground. I don't have the money to do anything with it. You know, it's just going to sit there. But if you can come along and with city resources or grant resources, and you can take it out and take care of it for me, then I'll be willing to sign the papers or whatever. I think we're going to find some situations like that. Because I think some people have gotten situations that is beyond them and beyond their financial means or beyond what they're willing to pay financially to remedy a situation. They have other uses for their resources, I guess is what I'm trying to say, is all of this, but I believe we're going to find some of that aspect also.
And remember, the word vessel actually responds to the word boat. And you know, boat is not actually a word, it's an acronym. And Mr. Thomas, what does it stand for?
Break out another thousand.
Break out another thousand. Mr. Lozary, you had a question?
I was just going to say, probably some of these cases are where, as a result of the storm, they received checks from the insurance company and obviously taken the checks and not used part of that to remove the vessel out of the water. Because I know that unlike with cars, I think with boats, when a boat is totaled, it's your responsibility to dispose of it. It's not like a car where the insurance company will pick it up and take it, you know, to wherever it is there, take it. With boats, I believe that they just give you a check, and then you do with it as you will. So what's happened here is probably some checks have been received and money spent, and the boat just left, you know, out in the water for someone else to take care of. I think you'll find a lot of that. And I was just going to commend Madison and Erin for a great presentation. And really, this is really good work, and I think we need to move forward with the adoption of it.
So I think that's a motion.
That is a motion.
Second. Second, any further discussion?
May I think Dr. Washington had a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies.
That's okay. What I was going to ask, just for clarification from Mr. Carter, so because the New River, technically speaking, is in Onslow County, there is no, there would be no funding coming from the county?
Not at this point. They've not, the county has lots of waterways that there are, again, we've been made aware, derelict and abandoned vessels in. I think Mr. Hanson talks about one on Queens Creek, a shrimp boat that's been there for at least two-plus years. So they, if they have any money, they probably would spend it that way. We are certainly not looking to the county at this point in time to receive any funding.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You have your own? Thank you.
Please.
Very good job. On the agenda is a memorandum of agreement and resolution endorsing Child Abuse Prevention Plan.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Child Abuse Prevention Plan. If you remember, several years ago, we talked a little bit about child abuse and child neglect inside the city of Jacksonville. And so since that time, we've come together with Onslow County, and we've put together this plan. The plan is called TASCO, Turning Adversity Into Success For the Children of Onslow. And if you remember, just some statistics, just to kind of refresh your memory, forty-three percent of the, of our Onslow population is under the age of eighteen. And so we had two hundred and ninety child maltreatment cases last year and three hundred and fifty-five in foster care. We talked about, the city of Jacksonville has seen an increase in child victimization, about fifty-eight percent. And seventy-five percent of that increase is child abuse and neglect. And so the challenge was to look at what we can do to prevent these acts, these acts from occurring. And so we met together as, as a community, and we've come up with a plan in order to do that. And it really goes into three different areas. It's building capacity for our children in communities, cultivating a shared language of understanding so people understand the issues that surround child abuse and neglect. And then eventually, our goal is to eliminate child abuse and neglect. And so how are we going to do that? Actually, it's in two parts. The first thing we're going to do is really understand what adverse childhood experiences are. And really, those are serious childhood traumas that basically affect children for the rest of their lives. And we can talk about all kinds of different things, whether it's physical neglect, whether it's physical abuse, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's sexual abuse, whatever it might be that causes these adverse child experiences. And so what we want to do is, we want to try to eliminate those or at least minimize those in our communities. And we do that by looking at the protective factors. And those protective factors allow us to, to support our children and to prevent child abuse from occurring. So I, I hope everyone had an opportunity to look at our Child Abuse Prevention Plan, which is what we're asking you to adopt today. And that's really, that's really that first step that we needed to make in order to do, in order to address child abuse and neglect in a more comprehensive manner and a more strategic manner. So the plan is the first part. Now we're going, now we're really going to roll up our sleeves and work on the second part, and that's going to be implementing it to reduce child abuse and neglect in our community. So we're asking you to pass that resolution, supporting the plan. Last night, the county passed that, that same resolution. And then we're going to enter into a memorandum of understanding with our partners on what we're going to do as, as the police department to prevent child abuse and neglect from occurring in our community and to eliminate it from Onslow County forever. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions?
You have some questions, Chief? Great work. Thank you. Absolutely. Counsel, you've been asked, we're being asked to approve the plan, consider the plan and the memorandum of agreement and the resolution supporting the Community Child Abuse Prevention Plan. Prove approval? Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item, number eighteen, is the designation of voting and alternate voting delegates for the National League of Cities' Virtual City Summit Annual Business Meeting. Before we get into that, I want to congratulate you, by the way. I've been meaning to call you, congratulate you on your appointment to Board of Directors. That's quite an honor, that's quite an honor for our city here to have somebody on the National, National League of Cities' Board of Directors. And congratulations, Angela.
Thank you.
Just before the meeting occurred at four o'clock today, and that's the reason why Dr. Washington was a few minutes late stepping into the council chambers, she was asked by the, by the National League of Cities to be their representative on a panel of five experts that really talked through a virtual presentation panel discussion that occurred from about four until five today that was broadcast nationwide. And the topic there was to address the impact and give thoughts about the long-term impact that the COVID-19 is going to have on us as a, as a community, as government. So again, Dr. Washington, we're all very proud of you.
Very, very proud. Thank you.
We're going to look for a designated, designation of a voting and alternate voting delegate for the National League of Cities. It's proposed, and Dr. Washington and Councilmember Brian Jackson are currently registered to virtually attend the N L C City Summit.
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that we appoint Councilmember Washington as the voting delegate and Councilmember Jackson as the alternate.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Very good. So that's, that's all the items for the non-consent. And then we have some discussion topics that we're going to talk about now. I think the first one is on the Sturgeon City Project Update. Deanna, you're going to present that. Deanna, you're gonna present that item.
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'd like to give you a brief update on the Sturgeon City Project. As you know, the facility has been in operation for well over a year. Obviously, COVID has kind of impacted their ability to host large events, but they have sought a lot of feedback from those who have been in attendance as well as from the management in operation. And you might recall, earlier this year, they had proposed some additional enhancements, both interior and exterior. And this was, and allow us to, to use some of the residual bond money that we have for this particular project. The interior enhancements that they were requesting included additional electrical outlets in the three classrooms as well as in the lobby area and adding an ADA compliant door for their main entrance. Both the Sturgeon City nonprofit, the TDA, and city council authorized us to proceed forward with those interior improvements. And I advertised this project a couple of months ago and unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids. It is currently out for rebid now with bids expecting to be received this Thursday at 5:00 PM. So I'm hoping that this time we'll get at least one bid. The exterior enhancements that they were requesting focused on access to the adjacent Sturgeon City Park, identifying some safety barriers along the admin building, and additional parking to accommodate some of their overflow parking issues. So to talk through some of the specifics, the access to the park included, they wanted access to the park and so what we are recommending, adding some additional sidewalk connections as identified in orange. And this would allow a direct connection from the building itself, passing directly by where the existing exterior bathrooms, notated in the blue circle, and then adding that second piece connecting directly to the park. The safety barriers that they are interested in pursuing include some of bollards and that was indicated in the purple circles. So the, what they have experienced is with the increase in traffic to the Sturgeon City Building, a lot of people are not familiar how to navigate through the site and they're finding that they're having additional vehicles around the admin building. And so to protect those that are traversing from the building itself to the park, they're recommending or asking for us to put in some bollards. And so the asphalt would remain, we were looking at putting removable bollard in the center so they could still use that access drive for large deliveries, et cetera. They're also asking for us to install some safety barrier gates and that is indicated roughly where the blue line is. The blue line that's close to the park, that would allow a safety barrier for those that, the children and everything, and other participants that are going from the park into, back into the nonprofit area, that they won't travel behind the lab building where we've got more of a working environment. And likewise, the fence to the south is right after the, it's a, a gate, excuse me, a gate to allow us some connectivity and safety issues for the vehicles not to travel into the drying bed area. And so if you come, normally if you go around the building now, you kind of get stuck and that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to limit the, that access to the admin building. So additional parking is the, the largest issue that we're trying to overcome. And what makes this site unique is that it actually has several drainage basins. And when we presented this earlier this year, the recommendation was, let's do some investigation to see what our options are before we make the decision on how to move forward. And so with that, we had conversations with a nonprofit and we were looking at trying to identify about forty-five new parking spaces. We also wanted to be careful in making sure that we had, the cost-benefit analysis was at the forefront, that we didn't want to, we wanted to utilize existing impervious surface area and not have to construct a new stormwater BNP which would drive the costs of the project significantly. So that being said, we identified two potential areas that we can install some parking. One is the larger green circle and that is just north of the existing garage. And the smaller green circle is next to an existing parking for, that serves the admin building. So the area just north of the garage would allow us to add forty-eight new parking spaces. And what makes this area unique is that it already has existing impervious surface area. So we're able to take advantage of that, of that existing asphalt and it won't, we have to do a stormwater modification permit, but we do not have to build any new stormwater BNP. There's existing capacity within that existing pond. So with that, we'll also be adding additional landscaping and a sidewalk to connect from the existing, the new parking to the new building itself. The second area that we're looking at is next to the existing parking for the admin building. And if you've been down there, this is probably that flat area that you always park in. And so what we're trying to do here is just, we know people are gonna use it, let's go ahead and make it a little bit more organized by adding these ten parking spaces. So when we add the parking spaces, we also want to make sure that we're limiting where people are going to park now because we want to encourage them to park in the new parking areas. So we're also recommending adding some knee-high fencing, very decorative as shown in the inset and it's indicated on the red line. And as you go north on the red line, you'll see the red line breaks right in, Glenn, you wanna help me out? Okay, well, where you see pavement in that area, that is that green open space that we have now. Okay. No, not that one. Okay, that area, that, the area, the red circle to the north. So in that area is that green open space where we were considering putting the STEM school. So that area now will just serve as overflow parking. So if all the parking spaces are taken up or occupied, that they can overflow into that area so we have a very organized parking area for those that are in attendance. Again, the cost of this project, roughly, if the construction cost is a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we will have to procure the services of a designer, probably the same design team that helped us with the Sturgeon City building itself. We will have to do a stormwater modification. So the estimate for the improvements that we discussed is roughly two-hundred-thousand dollars. And again, this money would come out of this residual bond money that's available as a result of this project. I have already discussed the improvements with the Sturgeon City nonprofit as well as the Tourism Development Authority and both have agreed to move forward with the, with the improvements as we've discussed. And this evening, I'm seeking city council's approval to proceed forward with the necessary steps for design and construction. I stand ready to answer any questions.
Asking for guidance from the council on this issue. Does that require a vote, John?
No. This is the best plan, Council.
Everybody okay with that? I think you got me approved. Discussion on food trucks.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, as you all, as, as council will recall, earlier this year, we had a group of food truck business owners that came to city council during the public comment session and had some dialogue with city council. As a result of that discussion, city staff had some further discussions with them and since that time, they've made application to amend the unified development ordinance. As we do with a lot of major changes to our ordinance, we have basically drafted some language for the unified development ordinance based on their application. We have taken this to the planning board for their input and now tonight, we are seeking city council's input as it relates to an amendment to allow food trucks within the city of Jacksonville zoning ordinance.
I want to clarify one thing. There is not an ordinance reading in front of you. This is not for you to actually adopt. This is, you know, because we're now in a little different environment, this is more of a workshop item. So we really are looking for a dialogue from you as to what you can support, what you'd like for us to modify. So again, I think Ryan has done an excellent job of reaching out to the food truck industry, but this is a workshop and based upon what your directions are, then at that point, we will go through the formal process relative to ordinance amendment. Ryan, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. We also have some representatives from the food truck industry that are here with us tonight. Didn't want to forget them that they are here in case there's any questions that city council may have. So as stated, applicant has requested this, so the group got together, they made their application, paid their, the fee associated with that. Staff analyzed what they were requesting and as a result of what they provided, staff basically prepared a proposal that we could support and we had a dialogue and a sit-down discussion with, with representatives. Like I said, we discussed this with the planning board and now we're here before you tonight. So our recommendation to the city council and the planning board is that we create an overlay district and this would be incorporated into our zoning ordinance. And only in certain areas, the overlay like we have with our billboard and our flightpath overlay and our adult business overlay, it would only be within those areas that food trucks could establish. In addition, it would have to be in the quarter commercial or the industrial zone. And that's part of the creating the standards that I'll get to in a moment. We would have to adopt the fees, we'd have to create an application process and we are proposing that these permits would run on a fiscal year. That way, they're good, once they're issued, if somebody comes in in October, they will be good through the end of June, regardless of whether this ordinance remains in effect or whether we expand it or whether we take it back and undo it if we were to adopt these changes. So just basically, the point here is that it will be good for that period of time regardless after it's issued. Right, so the food truck, some of the standards that we have identified is that basically the food truck businesses would have to obtain the permission from the property owner and obtain the necessary permits from the city, the health department and any other permits that may be required for them to operate a food truck in the city of Jacksonville's jurisdiction. All the equipment would have to be inspected and in proper working condition. They will not be permitted to be within a public or private right-of-way. We don't want a food truck stopped in a right-of-way and running a business in the streets. When they're on private property, if they're on a lot that's already got improvements, parking areas, drive aisles, fire lanes, we want to make sure that those are not being blocked. We want the, our patrons that are visiting that site to be able to move freely and the way that the site's designed, not block fire apparatus ways or the respective fire hydrants. Want to make sure that the food truck industry provides waste, waste containers while set up and that the waste be properly disposed of on a daily basis. We have no outdoor seating proposed, it would actually be strictly prohibited. As stated previously, it would have to be either zone quarter commercial or industrial. We don't want these set up in a residential zone or an office zone, they need to be a commercial type application. No permanent site alterations could take place. We don't want to see them adding asphalt, we don't want to see them adding concrete or gravel to accommodate the food trucks. So they've got to be able to accommodate it on the site. The site shall be cleaned daily or nightly. All items must be removed. Basically, when it leaves that day, you, there's no evidence that it took place earlier that day. Some additional prohibitions would be no parking on the city sidewalks because as we talked about with the earlier amendment, the city is responsible for maintaining the sidewalk so we don't want to have vehicles parking on those sidewalks and possibly damaging them. And likewise, we don't want the required landscape or buffer yard areas to be parked on or destroyed because then that would be a case violation that we'd have to go after the, we'd have to put a notice of violation under the business owner to correct the landscaping as it's required for the site plan. So those areas would be off limits for the food truck to set up. Any lighting that is established on the food truck would have to meet our lighting standards. We talked about that last meeting or the meeting before last, that we would want to see a U-rating zero on any lighting or any lights that are on the trucks. Amplified or audible sounds or devices would be prohibited, obviously generators would be excluded from that. We don't want them set up, you know, having a DJ or any kind of sound device to draw attention to themselves. Sinage standards. We want to allow them to have signage that's on the vehicles itself. And then we took this from the town of Swansboro, is to have a one-five-by-five A-frame sign that would be within twenty feet of the food truck. That may be what their special is today or what's on the menu, just to give them an opportunity to, while people are standing in line, socially distancing that they can see what's being offered at the food truck that day. As we've seen in some municipalities, we want to make sure that there's nothing signage-wise that sticks up above the vehicle. There's some vehicles that I've seen in, in the Ogden area where they've got feather flags on top of the food truck or the food trailer and they got thirty or forty of them. So it's thirty feet up in the air in some cases. We want to make sure that it's, it's at the height of the vehicle or below and on their vehicle. Just like with bricks and mortar, we do not allow electronic changeable message signs so they would be prohibited on a food truck as well, as well as flashing signs. We don't allow flashing signs so any type of sign would not be able to have a strobe light or any kind of a flashing device on their sign. As I mentioned before, the overlay, so the area before you on the screen is our city limits, the yellow areas are ETJ. And if you notice the green line and, let's see if I'm able to, I'm not able to annotate yet, but I'm sure media will help me with that. The green areas that, that you'll see on the screen, so Wilmington Highway, Richlands Highway, currently there's some areas, the flea market, it's a non-conforming use, they're setting up there, we've not basically enforced that because flea markets, you got retailers that come and go, so we've kind of left them alone there, but that area we would identify. The New River Shopping Center along Highway 24, Lejeune Boulevard. The industrial area, Bell Fork Road, which is in this area right here, we think that that would be a good place to set up. And then on Highway 17 North. And these areas were selected because we analyzed with existing restaurants, within these areas, there's either none or very few. And so you wouldn't have that competing situation. And then on the high visibility, high traffic, so you know, the customers would see them there very easily. And then the, with the circle here, is that you have some jobbing centers. So MSA and Stanadyne may be a convenient location for them to set up there on-site to service the, the employees of those businesses, those jobbing plants. So this was kind of staff's proposal back to what the food truck industry, for the most part, I think it was this, very similar to theirs with the biggest exception being this overlay map and the locations. That wasn't part of the original proposal. This is something where city staff looks at this as a pilot program, we want to try this out, see how it works, a balance between our bricks and mortar restaurants and the food truck industry. And we thought this was a good step forward to kind of try this out here in the city of Jacksonville. And that's, that's the proposal that we have come up with. And as Dr. Woodruff mentioned, we would love to hear some feedback if council has any as far as have we gone in the wrong direction? Would you like to see us go a little bit further one way or the other? And that way, we can draft that to code and bring that to the planning board and the city council for adoption. And then we would also have to bring forward to city council a fee, schedule amendment change and also prepare the applications as it relates to the food trucks. One thing that, that we heard from the food truck industry that we plan to incorporate is, well, if I come in halfway through the year, can I get a fee reduction because I'm not gonna get the full year? So those are things that we think that that's a, a request that certainly makes sense. So we're gonna look to follow some other things that the city of Jacksonville does with a reduced fee for half the year and we plan to incorporate that as well. This permit would be one permit and it would be good for any of these locations. So they would get one permit from planning and permitting and it would be good for that time period at any of these sites. So we're not gonna make them come in for, on a site-by-site basis. They would have to get permission from the owners of all those sites, they would need to have that available on the truck with them. But we are only seeking one permit for any of the locations they decide to set up. Be happy to answer any questions that city council may have and, and any feedback that you'd like to provide.
No question. You mentioned that the inspection would be delegated to the health department? Is that correct?
The health department already has to sign off on their, their food truck establishment.
Does that include heating or cooking equipment and refrigeration and so forth?
From what I understand, yes, sir.
Okay.
Whatever the county's health department rules are for food trucks and food establishments, that we want to make sure that they're following those as well.
Any inspection requirements placed on us by this?
No, sir. The health department is responsible for those inspections. We're just wanting, we're just wanting to make sure that, that I don't just walk in the door and not know that I need to get something from the health department. Because that's been an item of concern for some folks, they come and say, well, we got health department approval, we didn't know that we needed city approval or vice versa. So we So we're just going to make it very clear with our application process and as far as the code goes, that you got to obtain those approvals, they, the...
What, from other businesses?
We have not incorporated that into this, this amendment, we certainly could do that if that's something that the city council thinks we should.
I think that's, that runs kind of how a lot of other cities are doing theirs, it's consistent with what other cities are doing as far as food trucks is making sure there's a substantial distance away from brick and mortar restaurants and that sort of thing. If you look at Wilmington, Greenville, Raleigh, they all have those restrictions written into their ordinances.
So, we did look at some of those, one of the concerns that we had was a measurement from a front door. We like to keep things very simple and understandable, so whatever that distance may be, we would like to do it from the property lines, not from a door of an establishment.
I agree, that'd be a great one, man.
And we also didn't see that there was a need to establish a space between food trucks. You know, if two food trucks want to operate on a property that the property owner gives them permission to, you know, that's fine, but, uh, we can certainly incorporate in there a reasonable distance from a brick and mortar restaurant.
And also, as far as fee schedules concerned, look at the consistency with what we would put in place with what other cities are doing also.
Yes, sir.
Would the food trucks be required to post their permit on their vehicle so that the public is made aware?
That's certainly, we, we expect it to be on the vehicle, but we certainly can put in there that, basically, that it be visible for both the public and also our zoning enforcement officers.
Will it also include a sanitation grade?
That is a question that I am not able to answer. Joe, they're, the folks are shaking their head that they have to have it.
The answer's yes, they'll be graded. They'll be graded, they'll have to post it like anybody else.
Mr. Ward? If, if, if we're going to incorporate a, a distance from a brick and mortar restaurant, I'd rather, I'd like to see us do away with an overlay zone. You know, to my mind, we do one or the other. Um, you know, if, if we've got, if the, the food truck guy has permission from an owner, shopping center or whatever, then, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they, they should be able to operate and if we incorporate a distance from a brick and mortar restaurant, then I say let, let that be up to the property owner's, uh, decision whether they want to allow food trucks on their property or not.
I think you could have a prohibition, say like in a residential area or something like that.
I, I don't disagree with that, I don't disagree.
But I agree with you, I agree with you about the overlays.
My mind, we either do a distance or we do an overlay zone, if, for my thing.
We recommend an overlay zone. And I want to remind everybody, uh, we make our, our, we get our revenues the old-fashioned way, we tax property. We have to protect the brick and mortar restaurant and that's why we have taken the approach of a pilot project on an overlay basis. It, we already know that there are at least five restaurants that have failed and will not come back into business because of the C-19 virus. Maybe we're overbuilt, but I personally believe, and as your manager, I will tell you, to allow food trucks in the heart of the restaurant district on Western Boulevard, I do not support that. Obviously, I do not have a vote, you hire me for my recommendation. And that's the reason why we have recommended to you looking for the area where there is a food desert or a rec, or a restaurant desert. Now, certainly true, any of the areas that we show there, you will find one or two restaurants. But we have purposely stayed away from the heart because if you look at your tax base, I'm just saying to you, that is where we get our money to operate the city government. At the end of the day, it's up to you. We can bring your proposal back both ways, but that's why it's drafted as an overlay.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but, uh, you know, I want to be ca, I want to make sure that we're careful with, that we're not favoring bricks and mortar over a food truck. I, I feel like we, we owe any business person in town an opportunity. Now, I, I think that we need to make sure that we're, that we're taxing, even though, even though they're mobile, we need to make sure that they are paying, uh, on a square foot basis, in my mind, the same amount that a brick and mortar would pay per, per square foot, based on an assessment, whatever, whatever it's, however it's done. I don't want us to, to favor necessarily one over the other, I think, I think we as a municipality have to be neutral in, in opportunities that we give citizens to, to earn a living.
I have a question. Mr. Wazar. Ryan, uh, Ryan, what did you, in doing your research, what do other municipalities, how do they handle that? Do they have an overlay or, or like what?
It's, it's really kind of all over the place. Um, I, I don't know that I've found, I mean, it's, it's just, it's really all over the place. I think most of them I've seen where they're spacing from the front door of a restaurant. I mean, I think that, as Ben mentioned, that if it's a shopping center, you'd think that the landowner is not going to allow another business to come in there and compete with their tenant, but I guess it's possible.
Yeah, but typically, those, um, those leaseholders will, will have as part of their lease, not a non-compete, but, you know, if there's a seafood restaurant and you strike a lease with the, with the, with the landlord, they typically will have in there, you know, only one seafood place in this strip.
Right.
Or, you know, that's the protection that they have within their own lease. Typically, I'm, I'm not sure what others do, but, you know, I agree with Bob. You know, I don't think we need to over-regulate, if we're going to allow it, we need to make it free, you know, free market within reason of, of everybody else, you know.
Again, you're saying that the overlay you presented or proposing are these green lines, um, so, I can't really make out, is there anything downtown? Is there any available downtown here or?
The, the closest downtown would be on Lejeune Boulevard and New River.
Okay, so that, so no, there's nothing could be down here at all.
That's correct.
Right. I mean, that's what I see is, the potential of making it so restrictive, it's not going to fly anyway, that people are going to find out it's not going to be worth doing. If you, if you've got it so, you know, if you, if it's so stacked against them that you can only go to the desert, then you're potent, you're hurting the potential. I mean, I, I'm ambivalent about it either way somewhat, but I hate to see us go through all this just to make something that's not worth it for the customer or the, the, the food truck. I mean, it's tough, I mean, you said it had to be commercial CC anyway to begin with. So it, it, just at first glance, it, it looks restrictive and I guess that's what the intent was to...
It was intentional that way.
Right, right.
Because once again, our, our goal is to, it may not be your goal, but the staff's goal was to protect the tax base.
Right. Um, but they're, they came to us and are willing to pay to put forth this amendment, that's the way it works, right? They had to, they have to, we're not initiating this.
That's correct. They, they paid their application fees, they made their application requests, and you've written the...
So, they don't...
I have another question. You know, when we talk about tax base, obviously, they're, you know, they're providing a service and people are paying for a product and paying sales tax and obviously, that, that benefits us all. How is that regulated on the mobile units? Is sales tax collected and paid to the state like any other business, I would assume?
Yes, I talked with representatives from the state and it's reported just like a brick and mortar.
Just like a normal business, so we can't say that they're not productive, they are productive.
Right, the, the biggest difference is the property tax.
Well, they're prob, they're paying property tax on their unit, um, on their mobile unit, I would assume, like anybody else would.
Like a motor vehicle.
Yeah, like a motor vehicle.
But they could have it registered in Carter County, you know, doesn't matter, doesn't mean we're especially getting it just because the truck's sitting in a taxi.
That's comparable to bricks and mortar.
Yeah, I don't know that that would be, yeah, that's a little bit. Again, we don't want to be so restrictive that it's a mute point. I think if we're going to allow them, they're, they're, you know, if we're going to change the ordinance and allow it and allow them the ability to do that, uh, I agree with, with the others that we should allow them to just do it in the right way.
What do you think's a reasonable, if we don't have an overlay, what do you think's a reasonable distance away from a brick and mortar?
Well, I'm thinking if it's brick, bricks and mortar and you guys will have to help me, will they need permission from the landowner?
Yes. I mean, wherever they set up, they're going to have to get permission from the property owner to be there, but again...
Right, so they can't go to a McDonald's parking lot or they can't, typically, it's going to be some sort of parking lot or corner or something that, that they can park at, that they've gotten permission for. What I'm thinking is if in that landlord, if I was the landlord and I had someone approach me and say, hey, I want to put my shrimp truck out here, would that be okay? But I know I've got three leaseholders that are in the food business, am I going to allow that? You know what I mean, is it self-corrective, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Well, I don't think it would be from this standpoint. Uh, let's take 24 as you go out, uh, you know, towards Swansboro. Uh, that area through there, there are very few large property owners. Most of those are individual owners. So, in that case, I mean, let's say that you, that you have no distance requirement. Uh, a person who is running a, uh, let's say a furniture store could authorize it to be set up, but they'd be right next to Bojangles or they'd be right next to, uh, to Jimmy John's out that way.
I know that some of the ordinances from some of the other cities do have distance requirements, 75 feet, like in Greenville, uh...
Yeah. I think something reasonable.
Other food trucks also?
And what we can do is we can show you the distances, uh, that other communities have. I know when we discussed this initially as a staff, one of the thoughts we had was to say you had to be at least 500 feet away from the property line of a brick and mortar restaurant. And you're certainly correct, in certain areas, that would make it very difficult for you to be on certain portions of Western Boulevard, uh, but we can bring you back distances. If you don't like the overlay approach, then we can certainly, and that's why we're having the discussion, is, you know, y'all are the ones who adopt it, we're the ones who draft them, so if you'd prefer to have a distance, we can certainly show you what other communities do.
I'd like to see a distance.
Probably a distance rather than overlay, don't you?
I'd like, yeah, I, I'm concerned, one of the reasons why there may be a food desert or, or a restaurant desert there may be because the, uh, it's possible that they haven't identified it as such, but, but it may be that they know that, uh, a, a franchise or a restaurant owner may decide that it, that it would not pay. They did a business plan, if they, they researched the neighborhood or the area or whatever, whatever the, the community is there, uh, maybe there's not enough support there, they think. So, by forcing the, the food trucks to go in there, they may find like, like Randy, like Mr. Thomas said, that, uh, that, you know, they're, they're making an investment, but it's not going to pay off for them because it's not going to generate enough business. That, that would be my concern with how we've structured the, the overlay zone at this point.
Yeah, I don't think we need to make it over-restrictive because they're, they're had, they're going to create a tax base. So you have, I'm sorry?
How are they going to create a tax?
Well, sales tax.
And that's comparable to all your other food businesses.
No, what I'm saying is, right, but they're, they're submitting sales tax to North Carolina, which inadvertently comes back to us.
I understand that.
And, and if...
But if they're impacting another food business in that area, that's unfair competition, I think.
Well, if, if, if we, if we charge a permit that is comparable...
Yeah.
To what, what a brick and mortar is paying in, in property taxes, then I think that is fair to, to all parties.
In theory, yes, but that's...
How is it different if I have my little building here and I've got, you know, my McDonald's and the next door, the guy sells his property and a Burger King comes there? I mean, should that Burger King not be allowed to go there?
I mean, it's free enterprise, free market.
They're on an equal footing in terms of paying property tax as long as sales tax. The idea of trying to equate property tax on a, uh, food truck business, that's a quagmire that I don't know how you could, they're, they're apples and oranges. Property tax, you're paying for fire protection, place protection.
Oh, yeah, of course.
You're always the food, food trucks are paying for that kind of tax. I'm not opposed to hearing reasonable distance requirements and I'm not opposed to hearing about, more about the, uh, overlay district. I haven't made up my mind yet, but... Give us some information, I think we could go from there with the...
I want to take a moment to, to commend the two gentlemen who are here and others who have participated. Uh, they've been very, uh, productive in some of their comments. Obviously, they and the staff have not agreed on all points, but they've conducted themselves at all times in a positive way and we do appreciate their attitudes.
Thank you, thank you both for coming. All right, we've been in here for an hour and 25 minutes, so this, does anybody want to keep going or you want to take a break? That's it. Okay, we're going to take a recess for a few, few minutes and we'll be back. So we're going live now?
It is true.
You're live, good.
It's all good, aren't we? Changing the speed limit on the Highway 17 bypass in Jacksonville Parkway.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about what, uh, a subject that a lot of people have very strong opinions on, which is the current speed limit on the 17 bypass as well as the Jacksonville Parkway. So earlier this year, DOT received a request to complete a speed study on both facilities. Uh, took several months for them to go about doing that and it was completed in August of 2020. They then sent us the information from that study with a request that we talk to city council about your preferences as to whether or not the speed limit should remain the same or in fact, it should be, uh, changed. A speed study includes two key components. One is an evaluation of the current speed patterns, you know, basically how fast people are currently going. And then the second component is an analysis of, um, a safety analysis, basically, it's a crash analysis. Uh, you can see there on the screen, the speeds on the bypass as well as the Parkway. Uh, they are far in excess of the current posted speed limit. Now, this is what we call the 85th percentile speed and that is the mark by which federal highway uses to evaluate whether a speed limit is appropriate or not. So essentially, 85% of the people who were on the 17 bypass were either going 66 miles per hour or slower, 15% were going higher. And again, on Parkway, 57 miles per hour, of course, speed limit on the bypass is 55, Parkway is, uh, 45 currently. Crash analysis was actually really good, surprisingly, uh, given the speeds, it's well below the statewide average for similar types of facilities and that's basically the number of crashes per million miles traveled. Uh, there were zero fatalities, which is an excellent thing, again, for that type of road, for those types of roadways. Uh, however, there were injury crashes, but these crashes, uh, were generally related to driver negligence, okay? That had to do with excessive speed and yes, that is 90 miles per hour plus, uh, DWI and then running off-road. Now, those are not mutually exclusive because some of those crashes involved all of those things, but those are the instances in which someone was injured, uh, and had to be transported to the hospital or incurred a debilitating injury. Uh, the DOT request is for city council to consider adjusting the speed limit and they worded this request very softly, basically at our request, because we wanted to give you the discretion as to what the actual speed limit should be. The analysis showed that we could move the speed limit on the bypass up to a maximum of 65 miles per hour, okay? But the way that they're asking us to give feedback is, it doesn't have to be 65 or 55, it could also be 60 if we so choose. Same thing with the Parkway, 55 could go into place based upon the data, however, again, we could choose to put it in the middle at 50 miles an hour if, if, if we, we're so inclined. We staff this around the organization and in fact, that is the recommendation and there are a number of reasons why, but I think the main reason is, uh, because of what I call the rule of 10. You know, it's just my saying, it's nothing official. Um, but when I say the rule of 10, it's generally that drivers in this area, based upon a number of speed studies that we've done all over town, are inclined to go seven to 10 miles over the speed limit. Uh, again, that's across the board on pretty much all of our roadways. Uh, they, evidently, they feel that there is a lower level of risk with regard to safety as well as law enforcement intervention at those speeds. Uh, but again, the rule of 10, if you apply that to, say, a 65 mile per hour speed limit on the bypass, one could expect that folks will be, a good number of folks will be traveling up to 75 miles per hour. And that's where the staff really had some reservations about bringing it all the way up to 65. Same... Uh, same thing with on the Parkway. Uh, again, putting it at fifty-five, people going potentially sixty-five, we just didn't feel that that was appropriate at this point in time, given the roadway conditions. Couple other things, transition to other roadways. So there's disparity, pretty significant disparity on some adjacent roadways as to the speed limit. So having that more moderate approach, rather than going all the way up to sixty-five and sixty-five, or sixty-five and fifty-five, we're taking into account there. And also the fact that it's always easier for us to increase over time than it is to decrease. If we chose to go up to sixty-five miles per hour, and we found that an issue arose, either with safety or whatnot, uh, it would be more challenging for us to bring that back down to a fifty, or to a, a sixty mile per hour speed limit as opposed to, uh, taking this incremental step, seeing how it works out. At some point in the future, we want to increase it, we certainly can, but we are not necessarily required to. One thing that a lot of folks aren't really familiar with at this point, the, the Parkway itself is not the same type of roadway as the Jacksonville bypass. So the bypass is what we, what we consider a controlled access facility. It's a freeway. So you're not going to have driveways on and off of, of the bypass, but the Parkway will. Okay, now, they're going to be at key locations, just like they are today with Trade Street and Exchange and Merchant and so forth. Uh, but as the property develops along the Parkway, there are going to be more cars. There are going to be more turning movements, et cetera. And so again, that's just one of the factors that went into us recommending that fifty mile per hour speed limit as opposed to fifty-five. Uh, this is a discussion item, just like the two before, so we'd love to get some feedback from you. Um, but if you're comfortable with where we are, the next steps would be to go to a resolution of support. That would actually, not October, of course, because this is the last meeting in October. We would come to you in November for a resolution of support and an ordinance. Pass that along to DOT because they have to approve a concurrent ordinance for it to actually go in place. And then hopefully, we would have a new speed limit posted by, say, spring of twenty-one. I think that is the absolute latest that we would see it, but we would hope for that, uh, to be posted sooner if at all possible.
Are you saying the Parkway, I thought it was limited access?
Uh, the Parkway is a limited access roadway. So the, the bypass is what we call a controlled access roadway, and that means no driveways. The Parkway is a limited access roadway. That means you can only have driveways at certain spacing. So for instance, the Western Boulevard extension is a, uh, limited access roadway as well. And that's why you don't see, uh, Western Extension, uh, develop like we saw the older section of Western between twenty-four and seventeen, you know, where you have driveway after driveway after driveway, et cetera. When DOT acquired the right-of-way for both the Parkway and Western Extension, they only granted driveways at certain key locations.
With our planning and our looking at, Bob, would accommodate driveway cuts on the Parkway?
One of the things, uh, we do require a site plan review for all development. And therefore, whatever development occurs on the, in the vacant land that, let's say, the area that's behind Lowe's, or the area behind Target and, and through that whole zone, it does have to go through a site plan review. The police department is, is part of that, transportation is part of that. But what Anthony is saying is the current locations where you can get on or, on or off of the Parkway are not the only locations that will be allowed. But to your point, Mr. Bittner, there won't be individual driveway cuts for every business. There will be additional cuts, though, to what's there today.
And those driveway locations are deeded to the properties upon acquisition of the right-of-way. So for instance, the development along Western Boulevard, unless you have a deeded driveway access at a certain point, you don't get one. And the, um, Gateway Marketplace development, you know, they had three specific locations, and that's why they got three driveways. Although they wanted more, they weren't allowed to have more because, um, that's just basically the way the DOT set it up when they acquired the right-of-way.
But what we can do is we can provide, uh, for your information, all of the deeded driveway cuts that the DOT has agreed to when they secured the right-of-way. I think that would be important information for you.
We'd certainly do that. Is there any feedback on the speed limit proposal?
I was going to ask, so the state did the analysis.
Yes, sir.
But you don't agree with their analysis, is what you're telling me.
Uh, we do agree to a certain extent.
I mean, well, I mean, obviously, if you've done, your, your analysis is different, so.
Well, I, I, I think the analysis is what it is, okay, because it's based strictly on data. But I think what's very important for us as the municipality is to interpret that data, interpret what we see every day in the field by getting feedback from PD and Fire and Transportation and others, and make a recommendation to you about what we feel is the next best step. And in my opinion, sixty-five miles per hour on the bypass is not the next best step. And same thing on the Parkway. Fifty is more appropriate, sixty is more appropriate on the, at least for this next step.
In all fairness, that seems like more of a, an opinion rather than some, uh, objective information.
Well, I would say it is.
That's my feeling.
Yes, sir. I mean, it is. It's an informed opinion that basically was developed by getting all of our stakeholders inside the city together and talking about what is the best approach to recommend.
I'm a stakeholder. We decreased.
Yes, you are.
We, we decreased the speed limit on Western Extension, I remember, correct?
We did, decreased the speed limit on Western Extension, yes.
And Hill Park was that, you said it was hard to do, but I didn't see that hard.
It took a, it took a little bit.
It, it took about a year to get that to happen. And, and we actually had to do multiple speed studies because until that area developed out to a certain point, um, there wasn't a high enough traffic density. You know, so people were able to go fifty-five miles per hour.
Well, see, the problem there was you started seeing that additional development going there, like the, the neighborhood Walmart and, uh, oh, what is it, Old Chicago and all those places started inching on out there. That's when I asked him to look in, Anthony, to look into, maybe lowering the speed limit in that particular area because it was just a matter of time.
Right.
You know, for somebody slamming the back of somebody or teaming somebody coming out of one of those driveways.
And we'll probably cons, consider, continue to see that go down, uh, Western Boulevard as development continues. You know, but, but the roadway here, uh, Jacksonville Parkway is a little bit different because it doesn't have traffic signals. Um, you know, it's what we call a super street type of design, a continuous flow type of roadway. So in that particular case, we feel a little bit more comfortable with the fifty mile per hour speed limit.
Today, you know, this is a workshop, you're all the ones who are going to make the final decision. Uh, you, if you want to, uh, if you want the bypass to go to sixty miles an hour, or sixty-five miles an hour, or to stay at fifty-five, we're open to you telling us that tonight so we can prepare the necessary resolutions. I don't want you to feel that you have to be consistent between what you do on the bypass and what you do on Jacksonville Parkway. Uh, you may decide that you like sixty-five on the bypass, and you want to leave the speed limit at forty-five on Jacksonville Parkway. That's totally up to you.
That would get a little bit of a challenge.
The one thing I, the one thing I would. The one thing I would say about Jacksonville Parkway is, in the late afternoon, we do see the traffic back up from Western Boulevard all the way around to the entrance to Coles. Uh, you know, so again, uh, but it's really up to you. I mean, Anthony's done a good job of providing you with food for thought. Uh, we do need to have some direction, though, because the DOT has said, folks, we're leaving it like it is until your city council tells us what they're asking us to do.
Well, my own personal opinion, I, I get a little skittish when I think about raising it on the bi, on the, not on the bypass, but on the Parkway. Uh, because of the fact that there is a large volume of traffic there, and it does back up, and you do have cuts into that roadway. You have those little turnabouts, those little places where you turn out. And I'm telling you, from my experience, you know, turnaround on one of those things, you better be on your toes because, you know, cars can, can come up on you pretty quick there. So I feel a little uneasy about raising it on the Parkway myself. The bypass is a horse of different color, as far as I'm concerned. I, you know, I think, like you're talking about with the, uh, uh, limited access on that highway, I think the traffic does move pretty good, and I've had a lot of people complain to me that they thought that fifty-five was a little too slow, you know, to, you know, your traffic. But the problem is, you, you raise it to sixty, they're going to go seventy. If you raise it to seventy, they're going to go eighty. That's the, that's how it is.
Exactly. But I think the problem with what you're proposing, too, is now you're going to talk about a fifteen mile differential.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like this.
Per mile differential because that's kind of a, a tough thing. When you're coming past, like this way, past Monford Point, you go from, you know, fifty-five to forty-five, that's almost like a little speed trap there, too.
I'd be okay with the fifty and the sixty.
That's what I'm thinking. Fifty and sixty is the right, is the right change.
That's, that's, that's my concession point.
Mr. Thomas, when you're talking about heading past Monford Landing towards Wilson Gate, that is one of the, um, when I talked about the transition to other roads, that's an area that we struggle with a little bit right now because, you know, people are going full bore on the bypass, and then they break off to go to Wilson Gate, and they don't really feel like they want to slow down.
It's a much, not much different of a road.
It is not different, but the speed limit is certainly.
But if you had a fifteen mile differential, you'd definitely have a problem.
Right.
Or people, a lot of drivers would, yeah.
I agree.
One thing that I think we can, um, kind of rest assured on right now is that we do not have a safety issue out there. Now, wrecks do occur, and they're relatively few and far between, and when they occur, they're not that bad. So I think we can feel comfortable in doing something with the speed limit. I guess the question is, what exactly are we comfortable with?
I'd say the fifty and sixty.
I would go along with that.
I think that's the appropriate change.
Now, again, this is not the last time for us to visit this. If we want to do it fifty and sixty, and we want to wait a year, or we want to wait two years, we can come back and look at it again. That's kind of why point number three is there. It's easier for us to increase over time than it is to decrease.
That's fine.
Do we have a consensus, Mayor? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're saying fifty, sixty.
And we will prepare this for.
I'm for the states, but I, I'll go along with the majority, of course.
So we know Mr. Bittner's the lead foot out of us.
Okay, maybe we can get an exemption for you on, uh, your speed.
Well, that might help.
Those are preemption clickers, right?
Need to slow down.
Mayor, would you like me to continue?
We're going to talk about the downtown trail extension now.
So this is a project that's been on the CIP for a couple of years now. And, uh, we haven't spent a whole lot of time talking about it, and, uh, we've made some progress on it. Really, we wanted to focus in on this project, talk about what our plans are and, uh, what we're trying to accomplish in actually doing this, doing this construction. And of course, this is a discussion topic, so we certainly appreciate your feedback. We're all very familiar with the Greenway and Trail System in Jacksonville. Uh, for a community our size, it is very extensive. The backbone, the, the backbone of the system, of course, is our Rails to Trails facility. It runs from behind New Bridge Middle School over to the Holcomb Gate. I think it's about, uh, five miles, six miles, something like that.
If you ride slow, it's thirteen miles.
It's thirteen miles if you're slow, yeah. But what we're trying to accomplish with the downtown, um, trail extension is to create a logical terminus of the Rails to Trails facility. As I mentioned before, it just kind of ends behind New Bridge Middle School. And that's not really a destination. It just kind of drops you off, and then you're there. Uh, what this, what this project does is it would extend the Rails to Trails along the red dotted alignment. Okay? Connecting folks to Riverwalk Park, you know, encouraging them to go down to the other waterfront amenities, but then also bending around to connect to the Sturgeon, Sturgeon City Boardwalk where they could end up at Sturgeon City. And these are true destinations for downtown. Looking at it in a little bit more detail, so green is what exists, red is what we're proposing. Uh, we've got some details to work out on this particular section, but in general, what we're trying to accomplish is connecting the Rails to Trails to New Bridge Street. Uh, potentially looking at some signal improvements there. Depending on how it, it pans out, we might actually take the signal out and have it always stop, but that is yet to be determined, and of course, council will decide that when we actually go to implement. Moving on to section two, this is where it gets very challenging. Okay, we continue down Railroad Street with a crossing at College, all the way down to Court Street, um, where Railroad Street basically transitions into Riverwalk Park. The challenge here, of course, is the phone company building. And based upon what we see, it, it looks like a portion of the building is actually built in the right-of-way. Uh, but regardless, it's an immovable object. We're not going to be able to impact that building. So the intent here is to utilize the extra wide roadway uh, on Railroad Street there. It's got three lanes, each one of them is greater than twelve feet. What we would like to do is to pull the curb back into that outside lane, create a space to build the trail, it'd be an eight-foot trail through there with a two-foot buffer strip, and then the new curb line. Now, that would reduce Railroad Street to a two-lane cross-section, but the traffic in that area really doesn't warrant anything more than two lanes. And those would be fifteen-foot lanes, so they're more than enough to accommodate any large vehicles that we have going down through there. Moving on to section three, again, we're continuing down Railroad Street. The crosswalks that you see there are encouraging people to go and see Riverwalk Park. Um, but the trail would continue down Court Street along the property that we currently own. As you know, we use that for, um, overflow parking for the various events that we have downtown. And at that point, it would then turn to the east, uh, convert to an on-road facility, meaning we wouldn't have a trail, we wouldn't have a sidewalk. It would just be on the street, and we feel really comfortable in that because Newbury is very low volume, very low speed. Uh, at the very end, the other green line there would be us transitioning into the existing Sturgeon City Boardwalk. Couple benefits of section three. Uh, you're probably familiar with the sidewalk and the, the curb that's on the, or that is adjacent to the city's own property there. It's something that I've never seen before, where we actually have new sidewalk that's been poured on top of old sidewalk. So there's two sidewalks there. I've never seen that before. But regardless, it's not very functional. So one of the things that we'll be able to do with this project is better our property by restoring the curb, installing a, a multi-use path, and get all the grading to work out the way that it really should. Uh, a secondary benefit is that we'll really start to emphasize the use of an improvement that we built a couple of years ago. It's on the right-hand side, where we built a, an asphalt trail connection to the end of Newbury Street for folks to actually be able to get onto the, um, the Thompson Street Boardwalk. Which people don't really know about that, but extension of this trail to that point would certainly emphasize its use. Current budget, so the revenue that we have programmed is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That includes five hundred thousand from DOT and a required twenty percent match from the city that was programmed in, in twenty eighteen. Uh, from an expense standpoint, these are, well, the design is an actual cost because we've been under design, and construction is an estimate. At this point, we're not really certain what the bidding climate is like, but if it's anything like DOT has experienced with their resurfacing projects, and what there's, with their ADA projects, as well as what we experienced with Jacksonville Station, feel kind of now is a good time to go out and try to bid this type of work. Uh, that does leave a small contingency available, but there is some elasticity built into the project, meaning if the bids come in higher than we expect, then there are some things that we could potentially pull out of the project. Like we may not do improvements to the traffic signal, we may just leave it the way that it is. Uh, or if they come back lower than we thought, then we may do some additional improvements such as adding driveways to the city's property and, and some other things that, that we've identified, uh, through the design process.
One thing I want to stress is, uh, we're not asking you. One thing I want to stress is, uh, we're not asking you for additional money. Uh, this project was already in your CIP two years ago, so the project is already, has the match.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, the other thing, let's go back to the telephone company, cause I wanna make sure that you and the public understand what we're doing. A lot of times in your bicycle pedestrian plan, what you do is simply mark the existing asphalt. That's not what we're doing here. So Anthony, in this section, explain again what you're talking about physically installing.
I'm gonna have the same struggles that, uh, everyone else has with the, with the drawing tool. Glenn, could you help me out with that? Okay. So essentially what we're going to do is we're going to move the curb line out like that. Um, that's not precise, but it's good as I can do on the teleprompter. So we're gonna move the, the curb line out ten, twelve, fifteen feet. I can't remember exactly what it is and consume a good portion of that outside lane that, again, we don't feel that it's really necessary. Now, when there was a lot more traffic through downtown, it certainly was, uh, but at this point, uh, the two-lane cross-section would definitely, uh, serve as well. Here, it, oh, no.
You stood up. Were you, from, from that, the, the very accurate drawing that he gave us, that's the point we're making. And when you look at a budget of that amount of money, you say, wow. But what we're actually doing is literally taking over a thousand feet of roadway and redesigning it by shrinking the curb-to-curb distance and then installing the necessary improvements to accommodate the drainage and to accommodate the actual surface for the bicycle path. And that was the point I wanted you and the public to understand, is this isn't just going out there with paint or, or thermoplas and, and striping something. It's a real construction project.
And just like the, uh, the rest of the trail, it is an off-road facility. So that's why we wanted to do this, is to keep it off of the road, keep it protected by a curb line and that buffer strip to make sure that all riders are, are comfortable in using it, just like the rest of the trail all the way to Holcomb Gate. So the, I think we made the drawing even worse, but maybe it's a little bit clearer.
Stick to your day job.
Understood.
I'm a traffic guy, I'm not an artist, so what can I say?
Was there any consideration given, see where you've turned down Court Street, but continue on through, through, uh, Riverwalk Park or somewhere in that vicinity by the Marina and come back around and tie into? That would've added a little bit. I, I think it would've drawn attention to the, the Marina and the, the park rather than providing a little, a couple of crossings there, you know?
Well, I think what we're really trying to do with, in that area, because the, the roadways there adjacent to Riverwalk Park are so low volume and, and slow on traffic, just like Newberry, the intent was for folks to cross over and to utilize those roadways. We're thinking about adding some wayfinding to encourage folks to go and see those destinations. Uh, but were you considering something more like a, a raised crossing or a...
I'm, I'm just thinking, you would've, you would've, you would've exposed the people to riding by the river, to by the Marina and, and just had a little more scenic than just going down Newberry.
Well, and, and the other piece of it too, one of the things that we had, I'm, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, sir, but one of the things that we had talked about with Michael and Susan when Richard and I, uh, were, were, were kinda reviewing this plan with them, was creating a loop in the downtown area where the signage would maybe send you down Railroad Street, send you around up Wardola and then back over to connect to Sturgeon City. Yeah, so, I mean, that would be a very, uh, pleasant loop and that would give people the full taste of, of the amenities that we have downtown.
And Mr. Warden, if you'll notice at the very top of the graphic, uh, the white dashed, uh, what you're suggesting is what that white dashed is intended to do, where we would actually funnel people where they could either continue on the red route or they could go across into Riverwalk Park. Because what we do want to, you know, to accomplish, especially if we're fortunate in the next, uh, two years to build the restrooms and the pavilion down at the Marina, we really want to encourage people to come down through, uh, the, uh, through Riverwalk Park all the way down to the Marina. So through signage and those type things, which I think you have an excellent idea, we can add that to the program.
I just, I, in my mind, it, it just makes a little more, um, I don't know, sense? Maybe that's not a good word, but, you know, to expose the, the, the people, the, the citizens of Onslow County, especially all the new citizens that we get all the time with our military turnover, exposing them to the downtown Riverwalk area, to the, to the, to the, to the, uh, Marina, to the river itself and then back around.
Well, the way I would describe it is it adds value, you know, for very little money. I mean, we're talking about signage and some pavement markings here and creating that pleasant loop that does expose folks to things.
Why couldn't you come around coming out of Sturgeon City and then go down and back through there and then come back out here instead of coming down Newberry?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir?
Well, Newberry is actually where the, uh, where the boardwalk ends, but your concept of creating a loop downtown is very easy to do.
So you can reroute that to come back around and attach, right?
We will bring you back some additional graphics. The main thing we wanted to get from you this evening is your feeling, do you support this project?
Absolutely.
I, I think one of the key features that we wanted to emphasize with this project is the boardwalk.
People use that route all the time and now that if we can complete it, what a, that would be huge, I think.
I think so too.
For many people.
The good thing about it too is even though DOT's funding is short, they are required to spend a certain amount of money every year on multimodal projects. Our TIC, our TAC members are very well of that, aware of that. So even though they're in a financial situation right now, this is a project that they're using to meet that goal for the year, so the money is secure.
This is money well spent.
We will proceed with some, um, additional drawings and we thank you for your support.
Thank you. That brings us to the report section of tonight's meeting and I'll start with Mr. Warden down here at the end.
Report, Mayor, thank you. Proud to be here.
I have to do the report. I had, uh, helped a, a citizen renovate a property recently, part of the yard, I did most of the yard and stuff. And finally, they were finally able to get a tenant in just recently and the, uh, met the gentleman, he moved here from California via Colorado, different other places. And when he got there, our, um, recycle bin had no wheels on it. So he, the first time the trash people came through, he called him on the second go-around and he mentioned to him that, you know, my trash, my, uh, recycle bin has no wheels. He said that afternoon, lo and behold, somebody came and replaced the recycle bin with one, with wheels and he says, if that been California, it'd been three weeks before they got there. So he was very, he was very pleased with our sanitation crew and, and the response and, and the TNT that they brought to the table. But I, I thought that was a, a nice reflection for a newcomer to our city, so just wanna let you know.
Very nice, thank you. Airport Tim, this is our...
No report, other than we're in voting season and encourage all, all to come out and vote. Early voting, uh, for the next, uh, week or so and, and November third, so we need, we need everyone to participate.
Mr. Bittner, no report. No report from Mr. Bittner, okay.
Please, Washington.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to people being down there. Dr. Washington.
Mayor and council, I just want to let you know that I had the opportunity to represent you on two occasions recently. The first, I had an opportunity to go before the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts of Troop ninety-one thirty-three. There were a couple of Cub Scouts that was working, Weebloes, that was working on their Arrow of Light merit badge, which is the badge you have to achieve before you can become a Cub Scout. So I had a chance to hang out with the young man and there were some girls in the group and they were really curious to find out how we worked together since I'm the only female and I'm the prettiest one of the group. How do we learn how to compromise with one another? So it was a pleasure and a joy to represent you with our, um, upcoming future leaders of America and, um, it, it was just a joy to be with them. And as Dr. Woodruff indicated today, um, probably about three weeks ago, I received an invitation from the National League of Cities because, um, being on the Board of Directors, I was also nominated to be the Military Communities Council liaison to the Board of Directors. Um, the Mustard two thousand and twenty twenty program that was sponsored by Home Depot, Habitat for Humanity, Public, um, excuse me, Purple Heart Homes, National League of Cities, as well as the Housing Assistant Council, was, um, having, or they are having a three-day conference. It began today and will end on Thursday, that, um, is saluting veterans and addressing veterans homelessness and housing issues, um, in the midst of COVID nineteen. And there was some rearranging of the panelists that happened, um, because originally it started out with our United States Surgeon General Adams and then a representative from the Secretary of the Health and Human, um, Services, as well as a representative from the Centers of Disease, Disease Control and Prevention, myself and Carter Florence, who is the Senior Strategist for the National Meals on Wheels Program. That was supposed to have been the original five panelists, but as with always, sometimes things happens beyond our control. So today on the panel, it was Rear Admiral, United States Deputy Surgeon General Erica Schwartz, myself and Carter Florence had a very lively discussion, a very authentic discussion as we addressed veterans and their homelessness and housing, but also civilians within their communities. So, um, it was an honor and a privilege to serve you and to represent you on the national panel today. I mean, it, it took everything. I had to stay in my seat being in the presence of United States Surgeon General, a Deputy Surgeon General, so it was a pleasure and an honor to serve you in that capacity and I thank you for your vote of confidence that you put me in that position. So thank you to each and every one of you, as well as my constituents.
On Thursday, October fifteenth, uh, the Onslow Women's Center conducted their candlelight vigil at Riverwalk Park. The Women's Center works to provide assistance and compassion to victims of domestic violence in our community. Each year, the Center receives more than nine hundred and eighty crisis calls and provides almost two thousand five hundred nights in the Women's Center safe house. I was pleased to be able to recognize their efforts with a proclamation naming October twenty 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 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Jacksonville and I urged that all citizens join with me in showing support for the Women's Center and the critical need they feel fulfill in our community. Um, we have the Adopt a Program recognitions. The City of Jacksonville hosts an opportunity for citizens to give back to their community by participating in efforts to clean streams, streets, parks, or trails. And the city recently recognized the top three volunteers who have logged in over forty hours of service, helping make Jacksonville one of the cleanest communities on the East Coast. Uh, we're proud to honor Jim Wheeler, James Wheeler, as you see there. Get all that junk he's pulled out of that water.
He probably gonna get rid of those.
The Fleet Reserve Association and the Camp Lejeune Joint Chief Petty Officers Association. Thanks to all of them for their contribution to our community. The City Council and I look forward each year in November, uh, to recognizing our annual or having our annual outstanding veteran ceremony. In abundance of caution and with great concern for the health and safety of our veteran community, the city decided to not have an in-person ceremony this year. Instead, we have created a virtual recognition program, uh, some of which the council and I recorded this afternoon. Our program will premiere on November fourth at five P M. on G-ten TV and will also be available on the city's website, live streams and, uh, on-demand videos, as well as on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. And that's all I have to pass on. Dr. Woodruff.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you. A couple of quick notes, uh, November fourth is your next scheduled council meeting. Uh, that is on a Wednesday because of Election Day. Because we have very limited business, we are asking you to concur that there will be no meeting that evening, that we will have our next meeting will be two weeks after that, so it's gonna be the seventeenth, Tuesday, the seventeenth of November. So we're notifying the public, there will be no city council meeting on, on Wednesday, November fourth. The other thing we would remind the public, when you come to any city building, we do have a requirement that you must wear a mask. If you do not, if you should have, uh, the need for a mask, we have some available. But if you come to City Hall as part of our own precautions to protect not only you, but city employees, we ask that you give us the courtesy and that you wear a mask. Those are all the items that I have this mor, uh, this evening. Uh, Mr. Carter?
No report.
For our One City Moment and our Census Moment, we're very pleased to tell you that tonight is your last census moment until you sit in twenty thirty for the next census. So Glenn, please.
I've done three censuses, I probably won't have a fourth. Uh, this is what the, um, self-response rates are that we finished with. Note, Mr. Mayor, that we did beat Greenville and therefore we will be challenging, um, you to take this, um, costume up for, um, the mayor there, PK, to, uh, PJ Rutter, to, um, to don this outfit and to parade it proudly around City Hall or such there and we will help you with that operation as it was there. The Greenville, um, Area of Census Office, um, reports that they had ninety-nine point nine percent of the households, that goes from Onslow County all up to the Virginia border and that's it. Now, that's households, not people. So this doesn't count group quarters or anything like that as it was. So just on that, we're between forty-two million, um, dollars that we still didn't get out of Onslow County and one point two billion based on what our self-response rates are that we know of at this time. Now, of course, nothing's final till we see the actual numbers and that brings to the point about how we can challenge any numbers. One of the things that helped us greatly from the twenty-ten census was that we froze in time a number of indicators that we were able to show the Census Bureau had significant impact on our community. And we thank our friends over at Camp Lejeune that verified those numbers and helped us in the testimony before the Census Bureau and others in which, you know, we made history. We got a rule changed as a result of us being able to authoritatively do with that. During Phase One, the only thing we can challenge is their count of households. We can't challenge anything else, not any of the procedures, and we must quickly file so after that. So when that number's released, we'll be looking at that. And then in the next resolution, and this will take action of the council to do, is to be able to respond based on fact basis, things that empirically are incorrect. And that's likely like where we look at what the base has responded in the number of households or the number of people, vacancy rates that we keep up with through the U, Utility Division, anything like that that we can show empirically, that doesn't match what was supposed to be in place on April the first. And then, of course, we and others will be considering situational challenges such as how the census was impaired by COVID nineteen, the fact that we are a military community and the permanent change of station took place after April first and yet the report is supposed to be on April first. And the political climate in which we testified before you many times about how people would not answer the door. People were not participating in the census and there was given a political climate for some people not to, to do so. And one thing was that we were very disappointed in was while we had good military participation rates above that that we had in twenty-ten, it still was less in military housing than what we were seeing in other places. So there's some of the things that we can file with at that time, but that'll be up to you as to how we shall do that and what the staff brings to you for consideration. It's been an honor to represent you folks in this task and glad you don't have to listen to me anymore about the census.
Thank you.
Glenn?
State.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Glenn, for such hard work.
In closing tonight...
We're making our census coming quicker than you think.
In closing tonight, our One City Moment, it, it highlights the changes that we had to go through relative to National Night Out. I think we have some good slides that will show you that. As you know, normally, we have a tremendous event down at Riverwalk Park. This year, we really got out into the community, the Police Department, Fire Department, a lot of, of areas got out, and you can see how we really tried to engage. The gentleman in the back is representing the Army with us today on that. We had a great parade at many of the elementary schools, you can see, we had police and fire and other vehicles from around the city. It was really extremely well done. Interestingly enough, because National Night Out had to be rescheduled, it fell on the same week as Fire Prevention Week. So we also had the Fire Department and T and his folks participating. You can see some of their apparatus there, and had a lot of great interactions with young people and older people in the community, but great. And of course, we are all wearing the pink this month for breast cancer awareness. The virtual run, Our Hero's Mile, has been on display many times this fall. During the Remembrance Run, which was virtual, the pictures of our fallen Marines, sailors, soldiers, and Coast Guard were displayed in Camp Lejeune, at the Lejeune Memorial Gardens. This weekend, they will be on display again to encourage the runners for the virtual Marine Corps Marathon. And as you go through, if you have an opportunity to just walk through the memorial gardens, you will see the pictures of the fallen. Again, Mayor and council, we always appreciate the leadership that you provide to this community and the way you treat us as your staff. Have a good evening, thank you, sir.